Seventy-something meetings right now. Yeah.
All right, where's Dave?
Today is one of seventy-seven.
He wasn't on the side.
Today is above one because normally we don't have any.
Oh, for three years.
Yeah, of course. I didn't think in one year.
There he is.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You get to hit the red button.
You got it right.
And move your stuff down.
Who added to each?
They're joining you.
What are you doing back?
Here's your dog and bye.
She just texted me. She just told me she just left no jersey.
Okay, now.
Dave, you want to hit the red button when you get a chance?
Huh? I'm in charge of the order. I'm rationing it out.
That's what they need.
All right, there we go. We're good.
They're picking order. There's no refills.
We're ready.
Okay.
I want to say good afternoon and I want to wish everyone a happy new year. Can't believe another year has gone by. It seems like we do this much sooner than we realize. So, welcome to 2014. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. First, we'll salute the flag and then we'll have a moment of silence. Please rise.
A pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business today would be swearing in our two new committeemen and I'd like to call the Committeeman-elect Stephen Kennas down to the front and ask his family to step up. You're going to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right and you'll repeat after me. I, Stephen Kennas.
I, Stephen Kennas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of township committemen.
Perform all the duties of township committemen.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith, true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Curatolo, would you like to join us down here and your family step up as well? Left hand on the Bible, raise your right and you just repeat after me. I, Peter Curatolo.
I, Peter Curatolo.
Sorry, pronounced that wrong. We'll get that right before the end of the year. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of township committemen.
Perform all the duties of township committemen.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda, I ask for a nomination for mayor for the year 2014.
I make that nomination.
And that will be for who?
The new mayor, Gary Quinn.
Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
I'll do a roll call. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Probably yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Now, I'll ask for a motion, a nomination for a deputy mayor for the year 2014.
I'll make that motion again.
And that will be?
Mr. Dykoff for deputy mayor.
And can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
And at this time, I would like to swear in our mayor and deputy mayor to their new positions. Mayor Quinn, would you like to step down, please? This is Quinn, Amy. Oh, Matt, you're here too. Come on up.
I didn't know if my children would be awake at this time.
And who's like the voice, please? Left hand on the Bible, raise your right, repeat after me, please. I, Gary Quinn.
I, Gary Quinn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform the fidelity, I will perform fidelity, I'm changing stuff.
I will perform fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
And to faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations. My kids are asleep, man. Great, you already did it.
See? I already did that.
Yep. I, Mark Dykoff.
I, Mark Dykoff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform fidelity.
That I will perform fidelity.
Duties of the office to which I'm to be appointed.
Duties of the office to which I am to be appointed.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
And to faithfully perform the duties of office as deputy mayor.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office of deputy mayor.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations again. All right, mayor, you and I get sweet spots.
Okay, I know the committees members are all going to have comments, but we'll run through the agenda first and then we'll come back to the comments if that's okay with everyone. Okay, item number, uh...
Seven.
Seven. Resolution number 2014-01, making various municipal appointments for 2014.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, designating various municipal appointments and assignments for the year 2014.
Motion. Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn? You want to go down and read the who's liaison to what?
Yep.
Okay. These are the committee member liaison positions. For finance and administration, chairman will be Mayor Quinn, co-chair will be Deputy Mayor Dykoff. Those departments include administration, municipal clerk, tax collector, tax assessor, treasurer, planning and zoning, code enforcement and building. Community social services departments, which include the Board of Health and Local Assistance Board, will be Peter Curatolo and David Most. Law and public safety, which includes emergency services, municipal court and police. Our mayor, Quinn and Peter Curatolo. Department of Public Works is Stephen Kennas and Deputy Mayor Dykoff. Recreation is David Most and Peter Curatolo. Liaisons, beautification, Peter Curatolo, David Most. Board of Education, Gary Quinn and Mark Dykoff. Economic Development Commission, Stephen Kennas and Gary Quinn. Environmental Commission, which includes Illegal Dumping Task Force, Lake Management and Pine Lands Commission is Stephen Kennas and David Most and Mr. Quinn will represent us on the Pine Lands Commission. Library is Mr. Quinn and Mr. Dykoff. Municipal Utilities Authority is Mr. Dykoff. Mr. Kennas, Senior Services is Mr. Curatolo, Mr. Most. Shatree Advisory is Mr. Kennas, Mr. Quinn. Municipal Alliance Committee, Mr. Most, Mr. Curatolo. American Disability Act Committee, Mr. Curatolo, David Most. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Mr. Most, Mr. Dykoff. Veterans Commission is Mr. Curatolo and Mr. Dykoff. Tax Search Officer is Sharon Salaki, our tax collector, and Municipal Assessment Search Officer is myself.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, resolution 2014-02, authorizing the appointment of a township attorney.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of George R. Gilmore Esquire of the firm of Gilmore and Monahan as township attorney. And Mrs. Steger will be representing us on his behalf this year.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes, that was your first motion.
No, second.
Second.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Item number nine, resolution 2014-03, authorizing the appointment of a township engineer.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Michael O'Donnell of O'Donnell Stanton and Associates as township engineer. I just also would like to announce, Mr. Stanton is with us in the audience and he has retired from the firm and now we are moving on to the next associate in the firm, which is Mr. O'Donnell. So, I just want to wish him best in his retirement.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number ten, resolution 2014-04, authorizing the appointment of a prosecutor.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Stephen Zabarski as township prosecutor and Robert Zabatowski as alternate township prosecutor from the firm of Sittahole Zappolin Zabarski.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution 2014-05, authorizing the appointment of a conflict township prosecutor.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Stephen Smith Esquire as conflict prosecutor for the township of Lacy.
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion? Wait. The mayor can't make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Upstaying. Item number twelve, resolution 2014-06, authorizing the appointment of a township auditor.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Rodney R. Haynes of Holman, Farina and Allison as township auditor for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number thirteen, resolution 2014-07, authorizing the appointment of a fee accountant.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of William E. Antonides of the firm of William E. Antonides and Company as township fee accountant for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fourteen, resolution 2014-08, authorizing the appointment of a public defender.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of the firm of Brunk, Reed and Dolce as public defender for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution 2014-09, authorizing appointment of a conflict public defender.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Laura Benson of the firm of Barry Schradnik, Costis and Benson as conflict public defender for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number sixteen, resolution 2014-10, authorizing the appointment of labor council.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Stephen Zabarski and John Merkin of the firm of Sittahole Zappolin Zabarski as labor council for the township of Lacy.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number seventeen, resolution 2014-11, authorizing the appointment of conflict labor council.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Laura Benson of the firm of Barry Schradnik, Costis and Benson as conflict labor council for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution 2014-12, authorizing the appointment of bond counsel.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the execution in agreement with John O. Bennett of Dilworth and Paxton as bond counsel for the township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number nineteen, resolution 2014-13, authorizing the appointment of township physicians.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, appointing Dr. Theodore Ente and Dr. William Power as physicians for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty, resolution 2014-14, authorizing the appointment of a tax map maintenance engineer.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to East Coast Engineering for tax map maintenance.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, resolution 2014-15, authorizing appointment of a township planner.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Maksuga, a JDM Planning Associates, as township planner for the township of Lacy and this also includes for the planning board and board of adjustment.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-two, resolution 2014-16, authorizing appointment of a township architect.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Lenuno Architecture LLC as township architect.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-three, resolution 2014-17, authorizing the appointment of title search company.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Midstate Abstract Company for the title work for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-four, resolution 2014-18, authorizing the appointment of an appraisal company.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Integra Realty Resources for appraisal work for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-five, resolution 2014-19, authorizing the appointment of a director of community development.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, reappointing John Curtin as director of community development for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Upstaying. Item number twenty-six, resolution 2014-20, authorizing the appointment of a recreation director.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, reappointing James Wyland as recreation director for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, resolution 2014-21, authorizing the appointment of municipal alliance coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the reappointment of Heather Scanlon as municipal alliance coordinator for the township of Lacy.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-eight, resolution 2014-22, appointing substitute subcode officials.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of temporary substitute electrical, plumbing, fire and building subcode officials. Those individuals are Ray Liberty and James Kipers as electrical subcode officials, Mark Rotacco as substitute plumbing subcode official, and John Garrity as building subcode official.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, resolution 2014-23, appointing a public agency affirmative action officer.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, appointing Veronica Lorre as public agency affirmative action compliance officer for the township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number thirty, resolution 2014-24, appointing class one special officers.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, appointing class one special law enforcement officers. Those are Kenneth Martin, James Parati and Michael Hotman.
Do you have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number thirty-one, resolution 2014-25, appointing class two specials.
Resolution Township Lacy County, motion state of New Jersey, appointing class two special law enforcement officers. Those are Jesse Urban, Travis Horton and Russell Muller.
Do you have a motion?
Class two member to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing John Curtin as the class two member to the Lacey Township Planning Board. This is a one-year appointment.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number thirty-seven, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-one, appointing a class three member to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Stephen Kennis as the class three member to the Lacey Township Planning Board. It's a one-year appointment.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number thirty-eight, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-two, appointing class four members to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Vincent Leighton and Robert Larray as the class four members to the Lacey Township Planning Board. This is expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number thirty-nine, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-three, appointing alternate members to the planning board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Diane Denroch as alternate number one and Karen McArthur as alternate number two to the Lacey Township Planning Board. These are for two-year terms. Diane's expires December thirty-first of fifteen and Karen's expires December thirty-first of fourteen. She's filling an unexpired term of one of the alternates that moved up to regular member.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-four, appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Timothy McDonald and Craig Tamallo as regular members to the zoning board of adjustment for the township of Lacey. Said terms expire December thirty-first of seventeen.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-one, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-five, appointing alternate members to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Martin Ambromovich as alternate number two to the Lacey Township Board of Adjustment and expiration is December thirty-first of fifteen.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second, please?
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-two, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-six, appointing alternate members to the Board of Health.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Peggy Sue Juliano as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Board of Health. Said term expires December thirty-first of fifteen.
Move it.
Second. Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-three, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-seven, appointing members to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Robert Dizendorf and Terry Stewart as regular members to the Environmental Commission for the Township of Lacey. Said term expires December thirty-first of sixteen.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Yes, I have number forty-four, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-eight, appointing an alternate member to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Joseph Gillies as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Environmental Commission. Said term expires December thirty-first of fifteen.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Sorry, I put down the wrong initials here. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-five, resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-nine, appointing a member to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Arthur McClosy as a regular member to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority. Said term expires January thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-six, resolution two thousand fourteen forty, appointing a member to the Economic Development Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Deborah Medensky as the representative to labor on the Lacey Township Economic Development Commission. Said term expires December thirty-first of nineteen.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-seven, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-one, appointing members to the ADA Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the American with Disabilities Act advisory board for the Township of Lacey. Those individuals are Veronica Larray, Gladys Anderson, Andrew Rupetti, Craig Tamallo, Dino Lapinka, and John Malone.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-eight, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-two, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Those individuals are Mr. Most, Rosemary Coffey, Lyle Smith, Joseph Carroll, Bruce Connell, Casey Parker, Paul Cowan, John Raciope, Jack Nasty, Donald Trapp, and Nicholas Juliano.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number forty-nine, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-three, appointing members to the Beautification Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Beautification Committee. Those individuals are Eleanor Ditten, Fred Wolfram, Lucille Michele, Linda Salzola, Jim Baron, Kathy Baron, Casey Parker, Betty Jean Nasty, Holly Martin, and Trish Burr.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-four, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee. That's Gladys Anderson, Grace De Servio, Marie Krieger, Mary Jensen, and Fred Hand.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-one, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-five, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and this will be Mary Jensen, Marie Krieger, Mary Camborne, Gladys Anderson, Grace De Servio, Eleanor Ditten, and Paul De Ferrari.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-two, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-six, appointing members to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Veterans Commission. Those individuals are Bernard Snyder, Pete Borchester, Jim Wilson, Bruce Baker, Roy Johnson, Howard Toms, John Malone, Kenneth Hanson, and Tom, is it the Leza?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-three, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-seven, appointing members to the Resident Alliance Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee for the Township of Lacey. Those individuals are Reverend Apple, Linda Applegate, Anthony Barone, Chris Brown, Kelly Brown, Elizabeth Buckholz, Dorothy Klup, Robert Klup, Marguerite De Lambly, Lorraine Egan, Stephen Eckert, Thomas Faulkner, Denise Feroberg, Sharon Hoffman, Nancy Joyce, Nick Juliano, Peggy Sue Juliano, Rita Kacasek, June Keough, Marie Krieger, Ginger Lowe, Donna McAvoy, Marie Mundrick, Robin O'Brien, April Orlando, Lana Ostrowski, Paula Patri, Sandy Patria, Barbara Race, Margaret Rand, Art Riley, Kim Riley, Diane Rossman, Judy Santucci, Edward Scanlon, Bernard Scanlon, Kathy Scanlon, Fred Zabaria, Monica Zabaria, Peggy Snyder, Louis Stoffler, Joe Talbaki, Laura Timoney, Colleen Tonkovich, Joan Topping, Jean Tissimmons, Gary Vicaro, Karen Vincentini, and James Wyman. Got it?
Perfect. Have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-four, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-eight, authorizing a temporary budget for two thousand and fourteen.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, providing for a two thousand and fourteen temporary operating budget. This is to get us through the first three months of the year. It is about twenty-six point two-five percent under law that you're allowed to set a temporary operating budget for, and it's in the amount of six million eight hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-five, resolution two thousand fourteen forty-nine, authorizing deposit of public funds in New Jersey banks.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the treasurers deposit public monies in any bank, savings, and loan or trust company having its place of business in the state of New Jersey and which is organized under the laws of the United States or the state of New Jersey. The various banks that the township uses are Main Bank, Ocean First Bank. We also use deposits in TD Bank, State of New Jersey Cash Management Fund, MBIA, Ocwen Federal Savings, Sovereign Bank, First Home Savings Bank, Sennlar, Sun National Bank, Penn Federal Savings Bank, Shore Community Bank, Wells Fargo, Carney Federal Savings Bank, Bank of America, PNC Bank, and Hudson City Savings Bank.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-six, resolution two thousand fourteen fifty, establishing the interest rate on delinquent taxes.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, fixing the rate of interest to be charged on delinquent taxes or assessments as stated in state statute.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, I have number fifty-seven, resolution two thousand fourteen fifty-one, providing for dates of township meetings and the official newspaper of the township.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, providing for the dates of the township committee meetings and designating the official newspaper for the year two thousand and fourteen. The main legal newspaper that the township of Lacey uses is the Lacey Beacon. Alternates are the Asbury Park Press and the Atlantic City Press. As to our township meeting schedules, again, it will be the second and fourth Thursdays of the month starting at seven PM, and with the exception of July and August, we will have just the second Thursday, July tenth, August fourteenth, and November will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and then one meeting on December eleventh, and then January first of two thousand and fifteen will be our next reorganization meeting. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatalo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, before we have many comments, I'd like to open the floor to the public. If there's anybody in public who'd like to step up and say anything, this is your opportunity. Regina?
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, everyone, and Happy New Year. I just have a teeny, tiny, minor correction. The Lacey Beacon, unfortunately, has been out of existence for almost two years now.
It's...
So the template...
Is the beacon, but they still refer to it as the Lacey Beacon when I publish it.
When you publish it?
Yeah, when I send it and they bill it, it's still billed as the Lacey Beacon.
My bill says the beacon. All right.
Thank you very much, Regina. Anyone else? Joe? Have to get back into that routine of name and address, please.
Hey, Joe, if you want to start, grab takes. Grab takes.
Grab takes? Joe, don't name it.
Yes, I do. Name and address, Joe.
Number fifty-five.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joseph Apalo, twenty-nine D Cresswood Drive, Fork River, New Jersey. I happen to be an employee of Santander, so...
Who?
It's not Santander, so the bank on the resolution number fifty-five should be Santander as opposed to Sovereign Bank.
Oh, is it?
Sovereign Bank is...the name is better abolished. So S-A-N-T-A-N-D-E-R.
Thanks, Joe.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Man, everyone's just coming up and pointing out mistakes.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Committee comments. Mr. Dykoff, you want to start?
Sure, why not? As I look at this, we went through a pretty long reorganization, and we've got two pages, basically. And we have two types of appointments. We have appointments of members who do work for the township, and of course, they're paid for that. But on the second page, from item thirty-six to item fifty-three, any line that says "member", what it should say is "volunteer," because that's what these people all do. They're all volunteers. They all work towards making Lacey Township a better place. So what I want to do is thank and congratulate all the volunteers that we appointed today, and I call them the usual suspects, because they're the usual people you see around town involved in all the activities, and they're always there for the township to do what's needed to keep Lacey Township a great place. So thank you for all the volunteers, the planning board, Darren. I want to thank Mr. Kennis. Normally, the mayor and deputy mayor are the appointees to the planning board. We kept Mr. Kennis on the planning board because of his expertise. He's been the planning board chairman for a number of years now, so he graciously accepted to be out of his house one more night a week. Tina, sorry about that. I had mentioned to Stephen and Peter on election eve that this is the best it gets. Well, maybe this is the best it gets, because it's all downhill from here, guys. Sorry. But I want to congratulate you guys. I know you worked really hard to get elected. I know you do a great job. And you look at the five of us, and I can remember throughout the years I've been on the committee, that looking at my fellow committee people, we're all five very different individuals. And, you know, you hear a lot about, well, five are Republican. Well, I'll tell you what, we might be five are Republican, but we're five people with five different ideas, five people who, one thing in common, care very much about Lacey Township, and that's why we're here. So with that in mind, congratulations. Congratulations, Mayor Most, Major Mayor Quinn, Mayor Most for the job you did last year, and I look forward to a very prosperous and very good two thousand and fourteen for Lacey Township, and Happy New Year to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Curatalo?
I thank you, and this is my first time as an elected official, and I'm very humbled. I know there are a lot of people that worked very hard, and I want to echo some of the same sentiments of thanks for the years that I've been in the town. These are some familiar names, and they volunteer their time on all of our different commissions. They put their time in to make Lacey a great place to live, work, recreate, and to really make it a choice destination here in Ocean County. They say, you know, and I'll echo a familiar saying, to whom much is given, much is expected. And I realize that there were certainly people in the town that did not vote for me, and I look at it as my job now to earn that support. And I'm here for all of the people now, and not only some. So I have an open mind. I believe that a mind can only operate when it's open. We're not afraid to disagree up here, and we talk it out. I think we support each other. I'm very glad. I'm very humbled. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and people that know me in town know I speak from the heart. Rarely do I have...rarely do I have any prepared statements. And as the deputy mayor just tapped me, reminded me to thank my wife, and I...
I want to thank my wife as well.
I give him credit for that. Usually, it's Mayor Quinn that says that type of thing.
Out loud, he does.
He does. And so you said it, so in the first interest of public disclosure, this time it was Deputy Mayor Dykoff. So I thank my wife, who's really been there for me. We've been married many years now, and my little girl is here, and my mother and my mother-in-law. And so I thank everyone for coming, and I look forward to working hard for everyone, and I will do that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Kennis?
I just want to thank my family for coming today, and I also like to thank everybody in this room that came out today to support not only myself and Peter, our swearing-in, but also all the other members of the committee. We'll really work hard for everybody here. And I also like to acknowledge and thank Sean Sharkey and Helen Dela Cruz for their years of service and commitment to the township committee. Happy New Year.
Mr. Most?
Boy, it feels nice to sit on this end. I feel a lot lighter. On that note, I just want to say, being mayor in this town is just truly a privilege and an honor, and I have to tell you, we have a great management staff. We're very strong, and I want to thank Veronica and Lauren for all her years of service. Veronica keeps things together, and again, I want to thank all our management staff. You know, the legacy of Lacey Township to me, and I had three weddings yesterday.
Yes, you did.
And I bundled them, if you ever watched Porn Stars on Channel Fifty-Five. And I often ask people before I marry them, I say, you know, what's your favorite attribute about Lacey Township? And, you know, they always get it right. We're a community that cares about each other. And you won't find that in any other community. And as mayor, you know, I'm a little biased to Lacey Township, but you have to recognize it, because there's so many different organizations, coaches, and people that put such a passion into our community, all our workers, our supervisors. You know, we have organizations like the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, Vet Works, and all our businesses. All our businesses sometimes step to the plate and give their services out when we lifted that boat out of the water. And it's just amazing, the family that we have here in Lacey Township. You know, you look at the Food Bank, the Elks, the Moose Lodge, and just to name a few, and the Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, Vet Works, I mentioned them, and special thanks to Municipal Alliance and the Task Force fighting our drug epidemic. Boy, we have made such forward motion working with the schools, and thank all the teachers in our community, and working with the prosecutor's office, and really moving forward, and the chief and the police department. Those guys are just great. And thanks to my wife...sorry. And my family for all the sacrifices that I've put them through. And I just truly want to wish everybody and all the residents a healthy and happy New Year. God bless everybody. One more thing I have, and I don't want to forget Jim Stanton out there. Jim, why don't you stand up for a minute and just acknowledge him? You know, like Mr. Dykoff said, you know, we really count on our professionals to keep us on top of our game, and Jim, I can't thank you enough for helping us with the reconstruction of Fork River Beach Project. And you remember when you rescued that DOT money? We received the most we've ever received in Lacey Township this year, and I think that really talks to the professionals that we hire in this township. And that's why Lacey Township is really such a tight-knit community, because of all our volunteers that we have in this community, and it's just a terrific place to live. So I can't thank you enough for giving me the privilege of being mayor. It was wonderful to serve this community, and I want to congratulate the new mayor, Mr. Quinn, deputy mayor, Mr. Dykoff, the new candidates, and I'm very proud of this committee. I'm proud of the whole, all the departments, and I think we've done some fine work through the years. We can always improve, and thanks again, and sorry for being so long-winded. I won't be so long-winded.
Thanks, Dave. We appreciate it. Just a couple comments. First of all, I want to start out by thanking my fellow committee members up here for giving me the opportunity to represent, you know, the other four of you as mayor of this governing body. It's certainly a great honor to have the position. You know, those of us that have been here have had it a couple times, and the new, you know, it's something that you really, truly enjoy once you get, you know, the opportunity to serve within this capacity also. So I thank you for that opportunity, and I look forward to a great year working with each and every one of you as we sit up here and charge through the next twelve months. I want to congratulate Stephen and Peter on joining us up here. I know we're going to have a very, very successful year this year and moving on through the rest of the years. We're all, you know, up on this committee as a group. Both of you gentlemen, you know, have different ideas, and like I think as Mark said, or Peter said, that we all have different backgrounds, and we all bring something else to the table. So I think as a unit, the five of us are going to work extremely well together on different issues. We are going to disagree, there's no doubt about that, but the idea is to work together and come up with a solution, which I think we all have the ability to do, and represent the residents of this town in the best way we can possibly do it. Peter touched on a good point, which I was going to bring up. You know, when you run for election for the governing body, you know, you're out there campaigning, you're trying to get the votes, you're trying to, you know, come out with more votes than your opponent, of course, and at the end of the day, there's unfortunately winners and losers. But once you take the seat up here, it's so very important that you're up here to represent the entire community of Lacey Township. And I know everyone up here has that as their, you know, forefront item in their minds, and has always felt that way. The guys I've served up here and the new guys coming on. So I think it's going to be a great, you know, move forward for Lacey Township, and I congratulate both of you and your families, you know, for allowing us the opportunity to have these guys serve up here with us, because it's something we're certainly going to, you know, the town will benefit. We're going to enjoy working together. So thank you very much to, you know, the families, and certainly, you know, Ellen and Tina, because you're going to feel more than anybody. So it's really all good. The mayor, you know, Dave, I have to say, I've never seen Dave make a motion so quickly when it said nominations for mayor. He, I mean, forgot my name. I got Mark's name, so he was excited. But Dave did an outstanding job as mayor. He certainly represented us in a tremendous way. You'll never find somebody more passionate about what he believes in than Dave Most, and he certainly believes in putting Lacey Township first in everything he does. You'll never find a mayor that shows up at more events than Dave Most. I mean, he was out pretty much all the time during the course of the year, and I used to kid with him, you know, throughout the course of the year. You know, the greatest job sitting on this committee is being the deputy mayor, because you, you know, I'm in town every single day of the week. I run into a lot of people. I talk to a lot of people. But I always told Dave, so-and-so asked me a question. I talk to a lot of people, but I always told Dave, so-and-so asked me a question, I really didn't have an answer, I couldn't solve it for him, so the best thing you can ever say is, you should talk to the mayor about that. And Dave would go crazy every time I told him that, thinking somebody was coming to knock on his door. But, you know, you deserve a tremendous amount of credit, Dave. I know you took a lot of time away from your family and stuff, and it certainly was a benefit to Lacy. But I know you're going to stay as involved this year as you have been, you know, try and ease back and relax a little bit, and, you know, we thank you for everything you did.
Hey, Gar, before you go on, I want to thank you. I mean, when I first come on this committee, you know, you were mentor to me, you're like a brother to me, and I appreciate that through all the years of service, you know. I think Mr. Dykoff said at last meeting that, you know, you gain a lot of experience, and I've worked with some really fine people along the way, and you've learned a lot. So I want to thank you for being there for me, and I know everybody had each other's back here up on the committee, and I truly appreciate that. I know you always get the last word in there, so I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate all your help through the years, Garrett. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. I want to congratulate Mark. Mark is my running mate. We started this thing together, I guess, ten, eleven years ago, and we've ridden it all the way through together. Mark's always been my deputy mayor every time I'm sitting here as mayor, and we work well together. I know it's going to be a good year for us. But Mark, what I said about that, you ought to talk to the mayor, really doesn't come into play for you.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Kind of pushed that out of your back of your mind, if you don't mind, but, you know, it's going to be good. We're going to work very well as a team. Like Stephen said, I want to take and, you know, thank Mrs. Dela Cruz and Mr. Sharkey for their service, because they served up here for three years. They chose not to rerun for committee this year, each of them individually, and they... I know it was hard to walk away at the meeting that we had on the twelfth, because you get so engulfed in what we do up here, and it's something that it's just not, you turn off a switch and it's gone. But, you know, like somebody said, you know, we're different parties, but we work so well together with those two individuals. When we needed to sit down and work something out, like I said, we sat down, we compromised, and we did a good job accomplishing what we wanted to accomplish. We're going to miss them, but they certainly did a good job for Lacy Township residents, and they deserve a lot of credit, and congratulations for what they do do. So Stephen, that was good, bringing that up. Mark brought up the fact that we've made a lot of appointments today. Our professionals, a lot of professionals we have, we've had for a number of years, and we probably have the most outstanding professionals working for this township in any town throughout the county, as far as I'm concerned. We have a great working relationship. We accomplish a tremendous amount on a, you know, yearly basis because of a lot of these professionals. I mean, these people are really the go-to people that we, you know, need when we have to take and deal with an issue or solve a problem. You know, we're all five in different capacities up here in our jobs, and we serve, you know, the residents of Lacy Township, but we have people behind us that really are the go-to people when we need to get the information we need. So each and every one of the professionals, I thank for, you know, your service to us.